Well, good afternoon ladies and gentlemen and welcome to the Monday, April 17th of 2017, the City Council Work Session. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. This is gonna be kind of a marathon tonight. We've got about 11 or 12 items that we need to talk through and get done. So, the first thing I wanted to do was just give a, just a little update on our ICE project, where we're at, what's going on. Nothing out of the ordinary, nothing strange on it. Just want to let you know that we should have our GMP, the Gross Maximum Price Meeting, will be May the 4th. We'll have that and by that time, we're expecting him to have the MEP, which is the Mechanical, Engineering and Plumbing Prices in also. Had just a little update on it. He, I asked him, I said, "Where are you at on this Dustin for price?" I think it is coming in at where we're at, lower than we were thinking, higher than we're thinking. He says, "I can't really tell until the Mechanical, Engineering, Plumbing is coming in." So, I had for an update on that. If you guys have any questions, ask me, feel free. I'm here for you.
I got good news. It's moving along.
Yeah, it's going along extremely well.
I don't know which microphone is mine.
You can have like two or three of them there.
I can, thanks.
That'd be okay. Any questions on the ICE, you guys? One of the things that Shane did, you know, working on the floodplain elevations and such for the northeast part of Watertown, which takes into account down there where the ICE is, where we have banner hired for that now and they're working on that then also. Am I correct? Perfect. Okay, so the next thing I wanted to do, Tim, do you have the information that we can show up here on the screen for, for the gun range? Okay, then we're gonna turn that over to Shane and let Shane work on that. I'll bring you up at a later time. I wanted to show folks where we're at on the gun range, what's happening, kinda where we're at today and how we are looking at the Pittman dollars that are coming in for, through the state of South Dakota. I always questioned that last one. Is it Pittman, Rossman, Pittman Row, Pittman something?
Roberts.
Pittman Roberts, is that what it is? Pittman Roberts. Here's what the ICE, or the gun range is currently looking at. Do we have another one that can show them where it is located pretty much, or what are you thinking? Okay. This is gonna give you an idea of actually where the gun range is gonna be located. If you take a look, that's the Sioux River that's winding down through there on the left. Right up above that, if you were to go further to the north, you'd be looking at, that's where the new Ball Diamonds are up in that area, south of Hy-Vee and in that part of town. So, the Ball, the gun range is gonna be going right to the south there, right in that area. So, that gives you a clue of where it's at. So, now Shane, if you wanna bring that other one up. What we're looking at now is that big, red is the shotgun range. That's where the shotguns will be shooting at, out in that area. As you go over, I believe those are two 50-yard shooting ranges, aren't they?
Twenty-five yard.
Okay. Maybe you wanna take it over on that part too?
Sure.
And do that for me. That'd be great.
So, these are two 25-yard pistol bays, followed by 100-yard bay. And we're looking at having targets in there, two lanes at 50 yards and eight lanes at 100 yards. Then we have this auxiliary 100-yard area that eventually will be 10 more lanes of 100 yards, or temporarily might be archery or something else like that until we have need and demand for it. Then adjacent to that is a five-lane 200-yard area. And then we have in reserve, that's not included in the project at this time, is a potential someday, five-lane 300-yard range. You know, that'll be down the road quite a ways, but we do have a lot of potential out there. And then the indoor range would be up here in a building. And then the parking lot would be for both the outdoor and the indoor range.
And we're doing this in two projects. The shooting range, the outdoor will be one project. The indoor will be a project on its own. What we're hoping to do is because when we first started this project, we had from people that were telling us, well, the game fishing parks and such were explaining and if we were to have the LETI help and others to help us, they thought the cost was gonna come in about $350,000. So, that's when the state went in to try to get us their dollars from the Pittman account and they got 75% of that $350,000. So, I think we're about $242,000, are we not, Shell? Kinda like running that, 240? 270? We're about $270,000 that they're giving us as a grant. The rest of it has to be done as far as our own work, land and what have you. But when they came back to us, the state came back with a price on it, they said, "Well, this project really is, is gonna cost anywhere between $800,000 and a million dollars." So, that takes a big chunk out of our dollars that the city would have to come up with. What we're gonna be asking the state to do is to take another look at that for us and use more realistic numbers rather than the $350,000, to use a realistic number of $750,000 to $800,000 for this project. We would then request that they would try to get us the same dollars, 75% match from the Pittman Foundation. So, that's kinda where we're looking at on that. This project is slated to be started in 2018, am I correct?
That's correct. Well, once, we're about launching the final design phase and that'll be, you know, ready for bids either late fall or early winter.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make everybody understand that the word kinda out on the street is that this project is off the table, we're not doing anything. That's, couldn't be further than the truth, you know, further from that. Cause we're, Shane is working extremely hard with the GFMP to get this project underway. So, I'm excited for it. So, we're open for questions on this also.
Mayor, the Phase Two being the indoor range, is with our exit from the current rec center facility and the pistol range being in that basement, is that just gonna be shut down then, once they start their remodel and it just goes away for an interim time, or what happens?
Yeah, there will be, there will be a delay by the time they take it out of the Boys and Girls Club to when we can get something like this built. There's gonna have to be a delay.
There'll be a gap.
There will be a gap, yep. Now, some cities that have done it, have had that gap and they've never done anything. I think it would be our best interest to get something done, yep. Any other questions on that? Anybody from the audience wanna throw out a comment or anything?
Don't throw.
I'm looking at you, man. You okay? All right, good.
How many ranges do you, is there a drawing?
Absolutely. In fact, Shane, why don't we put that on our website also, so that people can get in there and look at our website and see what it looks like? Cause I think you said two 50-yard ranges or 25-yard ranges, what are the pistol?
There's two bays, or whole bays of pistol bays, so there's probably a total of 10 or, 10 or so lanes and then...
In each one?
Yep, yep.
So, a possibility of up to like 20 or 24 shooting chairs or whatever you wanna call it?
If my memory serves.
I think that's pretty close. Ten in the hundreds?
Then in the 100-yard, we're gonna have two lanes with targets at 50 and eight lanes with target at 100 to start with. And then we have a whole nother bay that eventually could be 10 more lanes at 100 and then five lanes at 200 yards.
One of the nice things that I can, I can throw out there, we've talked to Dakota Sportsman, we've talked to GCC Concrete out there, many of them, they're really excited to get this project underway and they're willing to donate labor and some concrete and things like that. So, it's coming together. One of the things that's a real difficult thing is the baffles. And baffles are not absolutely required on these things, but what a baffle does is it goes across the, you know, at a certain level on your shooting range. So, when you're back here ready to shoot, there's no blue sky out there. You can't see anything blue. All you see is baffles or target. So, it keeps the, keeps the bullets in there. So, we're gonna still have these extremely tall, you know, earthen, what do you call them? What are you calling them?
Well, the berms at the end and then the baffles are the intermediary protection between...
Yeah, so they're very, very expensive, so we're still looking at that to see if they're absolutely necessary to have those in there. So, it's coming along, I think, rather well. And then, once we get a better price on it and get the design, I think we go back to the GFMP and say, "Can we, can we renegotiate that $240,000, okay?" Any other questions on that, guys? Update on retail strategies. I, as you all remember, we hired retail strategies to take a look at Watertown and what we're missing, what we're bleeding out and so forth. I was not able to get to the last meeting, but Randy and Beth were both there and I asked them if they would give us just a short little talk on what went through, what transpired the last time, if you could do that for us.
Yeah, about two weeks ago, I guess, me and Beth and Janie Burg, who also sits on that committee, we had a webinar with retail strategies. They basically got all their footwork done on the project. They basically came to town and they did all their inventory of developer, properties and development properties that are, that are available. They've also did inventory of all of our stores that we have now. It's kind of amazing how they come up with their information, but it's all right there. I mean, every time you walk into a, say a Walmart, whether you know it or not, your phone knows it. Then it also tells them where that phone sleeps at night. So, they've developed a, a market area that we have about 172,000 people in our, in our market area, which is amazing for a town this size. They were totally shocked when even the times I've been telling them, you know, that, no, you can't go by, you know, Watertown's a little different and they agreed with that. Watertown is completely different. So, when you take a town of 22,000, you get 172,000 shopping area. But now they're going to start, where they've actually identified a lot of our leakage, which, our leakage, kinda interesting. I guess, I'm in the car business and that was the biggest percentage, so I told them I had to leave the meeting and go back to work, but...
That's right. Go ahead.
There was a lot of clothing, there's, there's some food interest. They will be putting all their stuff together before they go to the recon meeting in Las Vegas, which I believe is next month. But one of the interesting things, when we started talking about downtown again, when, when I told them we were actually switching First Avenue South to two-way, it was just like a couple kids in a candy store, they're pretty excited about that, so. And they, and they will work with, with the local merchants that are existing right now, so.
That's one of the things that really impressed me about the last webinar, was the fact that they not only looked at our leakage and gaps and who's here and who's not, but they also looked at what kind of negotiations can take place with the mall and what would be a fit there. They looked at all of our empty inventory, so that we weren't gonna continue to leapfrog over empty buildings, but what could go in those empty buildings. And they were very excited about creating a healthy downtown. They had just experienced it personally in their area where they were, where they do business, where once the downtown area just took off based on some businesses and some of those kinda things that they had helped bring in and are really looking at our downtown in the same fashion, they just talked about it, just a big boom of activity. It attracted more businesses even in the area outside of the downtown. So, I was really excited about retail strategies because they seemed to be looking at it from a very, if you wanna call it holistic, but a very well-rounded approach to our whole city. They're not just filling up one part of town. Didn't you feel that way Randy, that they were...
Yeah, yeah, and one thing, we've had a couple emails just over the last couple days with the announcements of the stores that are closing at the mall. They've been working with the developers at the mall closely to try to help them get some of those places filled, so.
Yep.
I've got one question for either you or either one of you two. In, I took a brief look at the report that was available and the 170,000 or 80,000 market area, I see that includes Huron, Brookings, Marshall, I mean, comments, I mean, is that, is that realistic or what's, what's their, what's their thoughts about including that in our trade area?
That is realistic. I mean, just like I say, this is where they get their information from, so.
So, if you come here and shop, your phone brings you here and then when you go home to Huron to sleep, that's where they record it, has it...
Or whether it's, yeah, whether it's wherever.
Mm-hmm. It, it is interesting. They finally got away from the whole five miles away from Target kinda thing because they realized that that's not realistic for a Watertown city, or for a South Dakota city. And so, then they started looking more at who actually comes here and shops. You know, you can't just put your finger in Target and go whoop for five miles around, that just doesn't work here. So, I think Randy really did a good job of explaining to them the difference between South Dakota city and another, so.
We'll see what comes out of the recon. Hopefully, they can put some stuff together and they are working with some retailers right now and, and like I say, on the openings in the mall. And I'm excited to see what they can put together after recon. This stuff don't happen overnight, guys, you know. I mean, it's, it's, for them to do it right, I mean, they spent a lot of time in the research. Like I say, they were here a couple days and did inventory. They met with some of the developers in town and things like that. So, they took inventory of every commercial property there is or, or like all the stuff out to the East Park part out there and...
I did have a chance to see the presentation they gave you and some of the names that they're looking at for companies are impressive names that we're all kinda hoping for. And I know that's one of the things why we hired retail strategies, that they have that, they have that ability to talk to them and to kinda work together like that.
Yeah, they already have all those contacts, you know, where you in the past have gone out to Vegas yourself and tried to get as much, you know, and thank you for that, you put in a lot of hard work there, but they already have those contacts built in, so they work with those people day in, day out, so.
And they've also been just recently implementing a lot of cutting-edge ability, statistic gathering and also, you know, they see how mergers, those kinda things. And as it's starting to catch on with other businesses, it's becoming more and more of a standard. They're the ones who kinda, you saw that on there, they're the ones who kinda spearheaded some of those processes and now they're kinda getting everybody else to come along with them. So, that was exciting too.
You know, when everybody talks about the stores closing at the mall, just, just reminding the people out in the audience and the people at home, every time you hit purchase on that computer when you're buying something out of town or online, that's what's happening. It's real, so.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And I know it's, it's extremely exciting to hear what they're saying and how that excitement grows and any other questions for these guys while, around that subject? Perfect. Okay, Justin, well, let's move on to number five, Discussion on Proposed Ordinance Number 17-18, Amending Section 19.0403, Requiring Parallel and Diagonal Parking on Certain Downtown Streets. This is a confusing little issue and there's been a lot of calls on that, a lot of comments made to me about it and maybe you can clear it all up for us.
I'd be happy to do that, Mayor.
Thank you.
You know, at the outset, I think it's important to stress that the intention and effect of these two ordinances featured in number five, number six of the agenda, is not to change any parking space in the uptown area as they stand right now. Rather, this, like so many of the ordinances that I've been taking a look at and revising, it's intended to ensure that we have a straightforward and updated system of laws here. And really where this comes down to on item five, is the fact that we have two systems of law by which parking in the downtown area is treated. We have this system in law that specifies certain streets in 190403 that are to be treated as diagonal parking, parking. And then we have a system in law whereby traffic control devices, including parking markings, are able to be set down by, by the city in a more administrative capacity. Administrative meaning, we don't have to lay out everything in ordinance, we simply mark the street diagonal, or if there is no marking, or if it's marked parallel, it's parallel. So, what this ordinance does is it is, ordinance 1718, is it, as pointed out in the memo, it strikes particular references to particular streets and how they're treated for parking purposes because in many respects, parking is treated slightly differently in these downtown areas than as depicted in ordinance. It would not change any of the parking orientations that currently exist in the uptown area. It also strikes a reference to tandem parking along First Avenue South. And as I'll mention here in this next ordinance, there's a good reason why that struck, namely because tandem parking as defined doesn't fit the international standard defining tandem parking. Moreover, the way we define tandem parking currently, essentially more onerous parallel parking definition. So, but that's something that's dealt with in the next ordinance. Basically, what this comes down to is making sure that our laws reflect existing practice and that's all that is being asked for here. So, I'm happy to answer any questions to clarify that.
There is a section of First Avenue South right now that is parallel parking. What is it, two or three blocks that I do believe we're planning on changing back if I remember right, aren't we?
That is correct, Councilman. That would be from First Street to Broadway. That's, that's where it's parallel.
From Third Street, Third Street to Broadway.
Yes, yeah, but the other three blocks that should be parallel are diagonal. So, I think we can pull it up here. You can see that from Broadway East, it's diagonal.
Yep.
Yep, so, and you know, for instance, Second Street East from First Avenue South to Second Avenue South is supposed to be diagonal per parking ordinance, but is instead all parallel parking. So, you can see that over time, there was, there were changes made, in many cases, at the behest of business owners, at the request of the general public, and our ordinance didn't quite keep up with that. So, instead of having to go back to the drawing board and come up with language to put in ordinance, you know, in many cases, it would be difficult to do for, say, individual businesses or a half of a block or a third of a block, or you know, if we were to parse these stretches of streets up to account for unique parking arrangements. I mean, and as I point out in the memo, you know, people don't go to ordinances to see how to park, they look at what's marked on the street. And so, you know, we have that existing framework for regulating based upon that and that's the one that would stay if this ordinance were adopted.
As we go, as this change takes effect, and this is the street that will turn to a two-way, correct?
Yep.
It's my understanding.
Okay.
First Avenue South.
But when you get from Highway 81, I don't know what the streets are, probably up until the point at which IC Church is there, that is parallel parking. Will that stay parallel parking or will that go to diagonal as well?
I believe it's angle parking from the IC Church to the west, you can still see there's angle parking here and here. It is parallel parking on the opposite side of the street. We can certainly look at changing more to, more angled if we need to or accommodate that. Of course, what makes angle parking and parallel parking difficult is how many driveways come out into a block. So, sometimes it's more practical to do parallel parking where multiple driveways are within a block and angle parking on those that don't have the driveway, so.
Yeah, wherever you're gonna have heavy residential in with that, you're gonna have a lot of those, so.
And the, just for a matter of fact, the IC Church is kinda that boundary, so to speak, of, you know, more parking demand to the west and less parking to the east. So, the intention is to keep it similar to what it is, yep.
Okay, so, did you take care of both of those?
I, I guess I could really touch very quickly on the other, Mayor, if I could. The other provision, let's see here, 1721, that is meant to clarify the parallel parking definition as well as remove the obs, well, the incorrect arguably, as well as redundant definition for tandem parking. The parallel parking definition, as you can see, had before, or currently has, a three-foot distance, if you will, between the rear of any vehicle to the parked, parallel parked vehicle. So, you cannot, you know, to meet the definition of parallel parking, you shouldn't be parking closer than three feet in, in, in front of a vehicle and that's to allow that vehicle to ingress and egress out of the parking spot. Well, the flip side of that definition was this, "No vehicle shall be parked nearer than three feet of the front door of the vehicle in front of it," well, or behind it, if you will. So, yeah, that, that doesn't make any sense from a practical standpoint unless you have a smart car, because if you park within three feet of most front doors, you are parked into a vehicle. So, this change would ensure that the three-foot follows a common sense standard of three feet to any vehicle. The ordinance also would strike that tandem parking definition. Like I said, the common definition used internationally for tandem parking are situations where you have essentially two vehicles parked and only one vehicle can get out. So, in order for a vehicle parked tandem to get out, the other vehicle has to move in order for that vehicle to then pull out of the parking spot. So, it's not, not double parking, it's not parallel parking, it's tandem parking. It's a different animal. Which, we, the only place that it is referenced in our ordinances appears to be Section 190403 and that last sentence would be struck under ordinance 1718, so, that's exciting.
Okay. Justin, thank you very much, appreciate it. Reed, you're up, buddy. This next one, Reed Holley, and then of course, give us your name, how many kids you got, things like that.
Should I speak into the mic or? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Reed Holley. Should I speak into the mic or? Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is Reed Holin. I think I know everyone here. Um, and I am here today in the capacity of the incoming president for the Rotary Club in Watertown. The Rotary Club in Watertown will be celebrating their one-hundredth anniversary in the years two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. And for quite some time, the Board of Rotary has been discussing to do something, something big to honor our club's one-hundredth anniversary. We considered many different ideas, and the idea that we would like to propose to the city is to do something along the lines of a park, uh, which other communities do have. I have pictures of other communities that have them, and we'll show them here. The idea would be to get something very nice, like perhaps Rapid City has with their Main Street Square, which is this. And when we considered it, after I got Board approval, I came and I talked with the mayor, and the mayor, uh, was excited, I don't want to speak for you, but he was excited to, uh, possibly go forward with a combination where Rotary Club works with the city. Uh, he discussed that the council has discussed options for a splash park, and Rotary Club would, would definitely love to come along and help with that. Um, uh, possible splash park in the summer and outdoor skating rink in the winter, which is also what they do in Rapid City. Um, so, but in order to go forward with it, the reason why I'm here today is because we have the opportunity to go to the Rotary District and get a grant. And in order to get the grant, the deadline for, for filing that is in two months. So if we had tentative city approval, we would definitely use that as a, as a calling card to possibly get district funds. Uh, our club has already discussed a financial obligation that we would love to come forward with. We would also parlay that into, uh, a district grant. And while I cannot commit other people, I do know that already there has been some excitement from individual members to come along and possibly donate something, whether that be park benches, trees, bricks, uh, warming houses, things like that. But the idea would be that Rotary would commit itself to helping out the city, and we would build several things, and then hopefully the city would come along possibly with a splash park. Um, but at the very least, we would, um, we would like to discuss that. So the idea, we, we did get some drawings done by, okay, and this is possible land that I discussed with the mayor. This is Willow Creek Drive right here. Um, I call it the bypass out to Hobby Lobby or Walmart. This is potential land here. This part would be more residential in the future, so it possibly could attract there. But I want to stress, we're not committed to any one parcel of land. In fact, we're open to working with the city in any capacity that they would like and, um, seeing what we can, what we can get. Um, here are some things that we would like to possibly pursue, is, you know, some jungle gym equipment, things like that. This is a possible depiction of the splash park with the Rotary symbol embedded into, uh, colored granite or colored concrete on, uh, at the base of it. Possible signage, this would be out by the walking path or the bike, bike path. Um, warming house, possible lights. Uh, and what we would do going forward is what, if we, once we got approval from the city or moving forward, I would put it together like a list, like when we built our church, we had a list of wants and needs, and the needs we would address first, obviously, and the wants, we basically put it out there and, and said to people and organizations, if you want to come in and fund this want, we would be, we would love to have you. And, uh, I do think that we would get things like that. Uh, we have recently had several longtime Rotarians pass away, city leaders, and I think that, uh, one of them has already said that they would like to possibly do something in remembrance of, of a longtime Rotarian. So sometime, could just be a bench here. There's another bench from Rotary. Just some examples of things that we would discuss or look at. And this would be like the Rotarian symbol, service above self, which is Rotary, uh, saying. This is a park down in Iowa, a Rotary Park, also down in, uh, I think this one is from Florida. This is the Rotary Park in Canton with a fireplace. And they recently got a grant from the district for five thousand dollars for new, uh, jungle gym equipment. So I don't think that that would be out of, uh, out of our asking price, definitely. So just some examples, and, uh, we just wanted to bring it to the city council to let you know that we would very much like to move forward with it and see what we can do to work with you.
You know, one of the reasons why we, we were looking at that part of town is that most of that acreage is all in the floodplain, uh, so we really couldn't do anything. But parks are okay, if I'm not mistaken. Parks are a good spot to have that. So when, when we looked at the splash park, you know, we, we kept talking about different areas of town to go to, you know, to go to McKinley Park, uh, you know, Riverside Park, where do we go with it? And when Reed and I were talking, it just seemed like it was kind of a great fit, you know? All the excitement that's going out on that side of town to have a, uh, just a really nice park was, was exciting. The only thing that comes with parks, and I'm going to be kind of the, the devil's advocate on it, is the upkeep on it, you know, it's the mowing and, and taking care of it. That's a big expense always for the city, and, and I think these guys, uh, will all be aware of that, and they, they'll be thinking about that. But I would, I would welcome all of you to, uh, ask Reed some questions. This is exciting stuff, I think.
A lot of the things you're talking about, Reed, with, with like individuals sponsoring things, you know, if you walk through our zoo today, I mean, there's tons of, of things out at the zoo that are, and that's the way they were funded, so. Pretty excited about seeing, you know, the, the backing you have from your other Rotarians.
Reed, I would say, um, I, can I speak for, mention that we're, three of us are Rotarians in, in this group here.
I didn't want to necessarily bias the committee.
In, in interest of fair disclosure, but when you pitched this at our club meeting last week, uh, this first time I had heard of it, I, I really liked this idea, so I would love to see, uh, Rotary somehow co-op with the city on, on this idea.
At this point, you're not looking for a place, you're just looking for approval to, but not.
That would definitely be the first step, because if we had city approval, um, obviously, if we had a parcel of land that we were looking at, that would probably make the grant, um, writing process that much easier. But, uh, if we had a commitment and an understanding, I believe that we would pursue the grant money anyway and also start looking at what Rotary is going to be doing to build. The good thing is we have a window of opportunity. I mean, we have two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen is the one-hundredth anniversary. We were founded in, in nineteen seventeen, but we had our first meeting in nineteen eighteen. So basically, both years can count, and we don't have to make it fast. I mean, we want to make it right, right off the get-go. So as long as we had something, agreement, we can have a photo op, you know, someone holding a shovel and say, this will be the future site, and then we can work together on, um, on building it, um, right and together.
Is, were you going to say the same thing?
Well, I was just going to say, you know, the idea of it, and I think in co-op with, with a city project, even a current city property, um, is very intriguing to me. I think it could be something that would, would show a very good, kind of a private-public, um, project and a relationship that we have in getting some of these completed. My first inclination would be to see if we could fit it into something that we already have as a property and, and work to enhance that, and the splash park would be a good part of that, I think. It would be something, so. Versus starting another area, Mayor, I sent you an email earlier today expressing that concern, and, um, you know, I just think that it would be nice to be able to, to enhance something we already have.
This project seems a lot like the Lions Club one, where they built that warming down at Lions Park there. It seemed very similar, and it's a great thing for the city, and I hope it's a great thing for the Lions also. And this would be great for Rotary and the city, I think.
I, I think it could be a very good, uh, relationship.
Splash Park's in this year's budget, isn't it?
I was going to say, don't we have a, already have a plan for something for the Splash Park?
Well, we do have the dollars put away for the Splash Park, but there's never really been that, that spot that we wanted to work with. So this, I thought was just a great opportunity to work with the, the Rotarians in a park. So that will more than likely be moved over into two thousand eighteen for those dollars. That's where we'll, we would do that, so.
Mayor, wouldn't it, wouldn't it be good for us to identify where our city properties are and where we think, just kind of boot a couple of them around to see what makes sense unto? You know, we want it to be something that would be very accessible, and if it can, uh, you know, we lose sight of all the properties we have sometimes and, and, uh.
What was nice about this area, just my, my two cents worth, what was nice about this particular area is the explosion of growth that's going on out there and, and the ability to make the, the ponds out there into skating rinks also, and to clean them up and to make it into a, a nice setting. It, it was just, one of the things that you look at is, it's really not an area that we as a city would really be building, you know, per se, any, anything because of the floodplain issue. So it was intriguing to look at that area with a couple of new hotels going on out there, other things going on, the walking trail right next to it. It just seemed to me like it fit that. So I think that's a, a great idea, Mike, to look at all our different properties, see where, where the best, uh, the best choice would go. But I think as far as a group here, you guys are pretty much on board that we should have a partnership with the Rotarians and, and move forward on this. Yeah, great idea, Reed.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. So I think you'll have our support.
Okay, and, um, I guess I would talk with you at a different time as to what our next steps will be.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, I think what we'll do, Reed, is, uh, I'll just have Shane get us out, uh, you know, a copy of all the different properties that are available in Watertown, if this is the best spot or if we need a different spot. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Piece of cake.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Great presentation. Okay, thanks, Reed. All right. Roger, I got you up next. Roger and I have been talking about, uh, Lake Compeska for quite some time now, and he's kind of our idea man for the lake. So he came up with some ideas for Lake Compeska and, and what we can do, what we should do, uh, just some ideas, and, and then we can, we can talk about this. So Roger, introduce yourself, and I'm going to, uh, turn it over to you.
Roger Foote with the Upper Big Sioux River Watershed Project. Um, been talking to you guys a lot lately. Sorry I'm back again. Um, but with the, but with the, the ideas and things that myself and some twenty-twenty folks have been kicking around, you know, we, we really don't have an official water quality master plan for the city of Watertown. This is not it either. This is my ideas of, of what I would like to see put into a plan like that. And basically for, for major areas, reducing pollutants coming in, reducing pollutants that are trapped in the lake already, improving access and enhancing user experiences. It all kind of goes hand in hand and right along with the stuff that we've been talking about forever. Some of the things that could go along with that, of course, you know, the, the photobioreactor, the Clearaz, the algae system I've been talking to you guys about, that's one option. Selectively dredging, that's another option, uh, creating a controlled sediment entrapment structure. I've talked to you guys a little bit about that, something right in the inlet to trap that sediment as it comes in and have something that we can efficiently remove it from. Kind of does it in, on its own anyway, that's where that sandbar comes from, but we have no way to efficiently remove that without, well, some, some major hurdles to overcome. And as you can see, some of the other, uh, ideas that we have here. The question always comes up, what is the benefit to the citizens of Watertown with improving the water quality of Lake Compeska? First thing that comes to mind, to everybody's mind is, well, will the fishing get better? Well, possibly, you know, I would not say it wouldn't. But improves, improvements in the water clarity improves more than just the fishing. It also helps reduce the, the harmful bacteria that, that are in the lake. Um, I know we had one, maybe two beach closures last year on Memorial Park. City Park was fine all summer. Um, clearer water, UV rays can penetrate deeper and deactivates those, those viruses and, and the bacteria. I don't need to go into the increasing property value, you guys are well aware of this, and it would also increase the usage. Um, out of your hundred and seventy-five thousand shoppers in Watertown, this is a great place to spend the afternoon while Ma's at Walmart. Hobby Lobby, yes. Um, the indirect benefits, of course, I'm not going to go through and list them, you guys can see what they are, you know what they are. Every time we improve that, that lake, more people use it, more people like it, they talk to their neighbors, more people come. This year, use-wise should be pretty good, now that, uh, Game Fish and Parks has limited access on some of the other water bodies in the area, so I would expect to see an influx of people using Compeska. Which brings us to a little more science stuff. I hate to do this to you guys, but I've, I've really studied this very closely and, and can quantify the numbers that I have. Um, based on the thirteen years of water samples that I've personally been taking and the information from the state health lab on Compeska, our annual loading for phosphates, the portion that's available for growth is around that six-hundred-pound annual level. Um, nitrates, you know, that, that varies a little bit, twenty to sixty percent of that is, is available, and we're looking at around twenty-four thousand pounds there to start out with. The things in the circle there, it doesn't lead from one thing to another, but they're all sort of worked together back and forth. You'll get resuspension on some stuff, you'll get entrapment yet again. The lake is its own creation, and the more we study it, the more we still know that we need to study more. Um, one winter I did, uh, mid-winter water samples for phosphates and nitrates and all that stuff, and the Saners had just gone through. I could tell that they had just saying, because you could see the stripes on the bottom of the lake from them dragging the nets. That was pretty cool. But in our weekly phosphorus tests, even as that sediment was stirred up, it did spike the nutrient levels for a little bit, but within a week or so, they were gone again. So the nutrients being re-suspended, could use a bit more study on how that physically happens, but is not as big an issue as we were originally led to believe. Does that make sense to you guys? So getting ahead of the game with some sort of nutrient removal system in the lake. Well, here's the, uh, the drought monitor statistics. All the spikes are dry years, where you don't see spikes are wet years. As you can see, we're dry more often than we're wet. What this means, as far as what I'm proposing in, in the in-lake treatment stuff, is that the more dry years, the further ahead we can get on the curve of removing the phosphates and the nutrients, getting ahead of that so that when we do get the big spikes, they're easier to handle. And have we done this before? Is anybody else doing it? What are some of the things that you've looked at? My God, we've looked at just about everything. Um, I got a phone call not too long ago about a gentleman saying, well, how come we're not digging a ditch between Compeska and Pelican, or Compeska and Goose Lake, then Pelican, and just let it flow that way? Um, we've actually looked at that. Astronomical cost. It can be done. We can do anything. Um, everything from just using the water treatment plant and pumping the Pelican just to get a water flow through it was one of the things we looked at. A lot of these things may have potential. Um, a lot of the permitting issues have really shut us down on some of them, as you can see. Um, the, but the things that really, uh, the ones that I'm promoting the hardest here, the phosphorus removal, the sediment trap, those types of things are the ones that seem to have the best bang for your buck. The most, oh, the best chance of success of really improving the water quality. So what I'm asking, and I'd like to put on this EIP, so you'll probably see it again, short-term forty thousand for engineering study for the, the Clearaz, the photobioreactor, the biological nutrient recovery system, uh, the forty-five thousand for the feasibility for the inlet trap. Uh, I talked to a couple of engineering firms, I know we'd have to go out for proposals, but that's, that's a ballpark of what those feasibility studies are going to cost. I'm also going to pursue other funding sources to maybe partner with that a little bit. And then, of course, long-term capital improvement, you can see the numbers there. I know we have to start someplace, I would like to get something on the plan, doesn't have to be this year, doesn't have to be next year, but something that we can plan for to improve that 5,000 acre recreation zone we have out there that we call Lake Compeska. There's no limit to what we can do out there if we have the will to do it. This is actually a hotel in Nagasaki, Japan. What you do is you get on this thing at night and in the morning you wake up in the Japanese version of Disneyland. But a floating hotel on Compeska, who's to say no?
I'd like a Disneyland with a big water park.
There you go, it's a huge water park out there. When the wind blows, it's a lot of fun.
Roger, what would a sediment trap look like? What are you talking about? You're not talking about a dam now, so you're talking about something totally different.
Um, imagine if you will, a sluice box in gold mining. Water flows through, creates a turbulence, and then the solids drop out, the heavier material drops to the bottom. That's a rough visualization of what something like that would look like. It could be baffles, it could be inclined, a series of inclined plates. There again, I need heavier duty engineering to come up with the right structure for that. Excuse me. But it's happening already, as the water comes over the weir, everything's churned, you can see the dirt building up underneath the Highway 20 Bridge. The sandbar gets bigger every year. Some of that's part of long shore drift that moves around in the lake annually. But it's happening there, the problem is we can't get at it easily. I mean, we can go in there with machines, but the Corps of Engineer really frowns on stirring up a huge sediment plume. That's why they say do it in the winter. But that's something that we can go in annually or every four or five years and clean all the dirt out of it, then it's out of the system, it's not adding to the load that we already have.
One of the things, Roger, and I know that you have that on, that you'd like to see on the CIP and for this 2018, what I would personally like to see, and you guys chime in if you like it or not, I think we should get together a group of, say, eight or 10 people, you know, yourself included, maybe one council person, some people from the community that are really involved with the lake. And maybe come up with that eight or 10 priorities and then break that down to what would be the community's number one priority. It may be totally different than yours or mine. You know, I don't think that'd be all bad. If we could get that done before the CIP deadlines that we're looking at.
Just whip that out in a week or two?
I think you could do it. Yeah. Do you guys think that would maybe work? I know, Dan, you're very interested in the lake out there and Glenn, you're very interested in the lake, I think we could do this, yeah. We need to do something for Lake Compeska, there's just absolutely no doubt.
Mayor, can you explain the priorities, what that group would come to, different than what Roger's identified?
Well, I think that maybe their priority isn't the phosphorus, maybe their priority is to, first thing, clean out the inlet outlet there, you know, so we don't have that big sandbar going across. I'm just saying their priorities could be, as a whole, as a city, to help guide, you know, some of the ideas. It's just a thought.
I can definitely organize that.
You know, it's just a thought, that's what I would be looking at, is to bring a little more input in there of what the people in town, what their priorities would be for the lake. I would agree, I'd like to see more walleye in there. You guys okay with that? You think that's okay or not? Is it a waste of time to put a group together to look at the lake? I don't think so.
One question real quick, when you were showing those different projects up there and then Mayor was talking about, yes, the different ideas, is there a specific order that some of those things have to happen in? Or could it be indeed, we could try this first and we could try that second? You know, should the order change or should the desires of the group change? Or is there a certain pattern that needs to be followed or both?
Yes and no. The top two would be the sediment trap, to catch the stuff as it comes in and then to deal with the stuff that's in the lake already. So the bio remediation, taking the nutrients out of the lake that are trapped there now that we can't get rid of. Those would be my top two. It could be someone else's. Creating new access points, you know, that could be further down the list.
Perfect. I tell you, Roger, I hate to break in, but I've got to move on. I've got three more people that want to get up here and speak quick.
Well, thanks for squeezing me in, I know I didn't make the agenda.
I know. Thank you for being here, I think it's really important that we start moving forward with Lake Compeska. Thanks, Roger.
Thank you.
Tim, if you want to, come on up, we'll go through this and kind of give people an update of what's going on in your world here.
Good evening. I guess I just wanted to speak a little bit about some extra enforcement that we're going to be doing. As you know, the police department is always looking at ways to make the roadway safer. We have a traffic safety team that works pretty hard with, in conjunction with the highway safety grant. As you know, this year we've been enforcing speed more to try and reduce accidents. What we've seen is that although we have an ordinance on the books for texting and driving, it's really under enforced because it's difficult to enforce with a marked vehicle. So the traffic safety team has been strategizing to see how we could enforce that better. We know that distracted driving causes accidents, there's no doubt about it. We just don't have those statistics. So the team has developed some strategies, including education, it's going to be a holistic approach, education first, PSAs, that type of thing. And then we're going to go ahead and do some increased enforcement. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about that or?
I think it is important, Tim, you know, and I've caught myself doing the thing, you know, where you're sitting at a corner and waiting for that red light and you look down, your phone beeps and you start sending something, all of a sudden, the light's green and you don't really know for how long. But our.
And we've all seen it driving around, we see the person.
And we see people, you know, on their phones and if they're driving and they're not going crazy out there, it's not a distraction. But I think that the time has come, I know our fines are pretty steep.
Yeah, it's a $200 fine, you know, it's up to, it's a class two misdemeanor, so it could be up to a $500 fine, but we've set the bond amount for 200.
I think that's just really good because I've seen, I was coming down fourth and somebody blew right through Maple without stopping because they had their phone and their cigarette. I think they were driving with their elbow, but they were clearly not paying any attention, you know, and I've seen lots of that, bunch of young kids in a car. Of course, they don't talk anymore, they text and boom, right through the intersection of 212 and 81, which is a huge intersection and, you know, I just sit there and go gulp. And so it would be really good to have some, it only takes a few times for people to realize that that's really being cracked down on to spread the word, you know.
And with summer coming, we're going to have kids out playing and crossing the streets and we just want to make it safer.
Yeah, I left half my tires on the road there when I had to stop.
So the real meaning tonight was to have the guys come in and just explain that we're going to start cracking down a little bit here. There'll be a real education time that the folks will know what's going on and, you know, in just a short time, three, four weeks or so, they're going to start noticing that they will get pulled over for that.
Yes, sir.
You know, since we've made that an ordinance, has, how many tickets been written or very few, isn't it?
It is very few.
It's a tough one to catch them, but.
Less than a handful, and you're right, it's difficult.
How do you differentiate between them using their phone for other purposes versus texting? Because it, when we say texting and driving, but is it the, does it have to be texting or can it be somebody that's pulling up or dialing their phone or, I mean, how do you?
It's a great question. No, you can make a phone call, but it's monitoring, right? It's spending enough time to see that, you know, if they're sitting there and it never goes up to their ear or they're not talking, you know, so that's why it's difficult to enforce. But if we get a high-profile vehicle or put people at intersections watching, you know, those types of things. So if you wanted to pull up the ordinance, you sure can, but you can make phone calls, but you can't access the.
I don't really have time tonight.
Access the web or anything like that, Facebook, you know, all those things that people do, Snapchat.
Distracted driving, basically.
Exactly. So thank you for that and we're going to move on. I just, I think it's great that we are going to start this kind of a program that, just an educational process at first, so people know it could happen.
I think Sioux Falls just did one, I think they were pretty successful at.
Morehead did too, there was a big news article, yeah.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tim, appreciate it. Robbie? We'll get to you at Ryan. Yeah, pretty quick.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make this short and sweet.
Rob, thanks for being here.
Thank you. I'm going to update you guys just on our yearly street maintenance projects. We are currently out advertising for beds for milling overlay, chip seal and crack seal. We're projecting to do around 325 blocks of crack seal this year. Let's see, actually, I got up the wrong piece first here, let's see what we got here. All right, what we're looking at milling and overlaying for this season is 14th Avenue North from Highway 81 all the way to 19th Street, minus the roundabout area. The other spot south of there, you'll see 10th Avenue North from Highway 81 to 11th Street East. We're planning on doing that. Down here, let's see here, oops. I lost it. It's wrong. Well, anyway, I can describe the rest. First Avenue South from Highway 81 to Fourth Street West, that's the street we're going to turn into a two-way. We're planning on milling and overlaying that. And then let's see, out at the lake, I know that one did show up here. Airport Road going in, both legs, that's in pretty tough shape out there too, that's needed that for a while. And then we have an alternate of Summerwood out here, depending on how the prices come in. That's what we're looking at for milling overlay. As far as chip sealing this year is a south bypass here, let's see, from Highway 81 all the way around to Walmart. Engineering does have a project on 29th Street. We'll be starting the chip seal just south of that. And we will crack seal that before we chip it, so that'll be one stretch we do. And then we're looking at doing Pheasant Ridge, out there, Pheasant Ridge Drive, all the way around to, I think it's 43rd out there. Let's see. And then right east of Stones Truck Stop, we have a block in there that we're going to do too. So that's what we have for our yearly maintenance project this year.
Rob, did part of this come up from your asphalt testing or whatever or what?
The pavement management study, not on this, we're still waiting for the final report on that. So some of this has come up like our, we know our timeframe as far as when we should be chip sealing, like the east leg of the south bypass is due. That was two years prior to the west half, I believe. So we're doing that area and the same with Pheasant Ridge Drive out there, so as far as chip sealing goes. Milling overlay, some of 14th Avenue, from all the construction of the school and the Wellness Center, it's taken kind of a beat in there, so it's in pretty tough shape.
I'll make a comment and then I got a question. One comment while we're on roads, the First Avenue South and 11th Street East, that intersection of where we stop is in pretty tough shape right now. I don't know if you guys could put something in there for the short term, but question I have is maybe it's a Shane question. The 14th Avenue North, when is that scheduled? Is that 19 or, what year is that going to be redone like 19th, North 19th was, 19th Street?
Well, if we do the overlay now, we hope to get another five to 10 years out of it before we entertain a project.
Well, that was on the list to get done for the curb and gutter work like we did on North 19th. Is that gone? Is that off the?
It's not on our current five-year plan, if that's what the question is. You know, we're trying to get as much life out of that road that exists there today to prolong it before we would do that aggressive of a project.
Where did that project go?
I think the project is not in there, Mike, I think a couple of years ago we pulled that out. And because we were looking at the STIP funds that came in, you know, to bank those for two or three years, we used those STIP funds over on 19th Street. We would have to bank them in order to get that road completely done. Now, if I'm not mistaken, Shane, you were still going to be able to put in some turning on that to get up into the Wellness Center so that it's more accessible?
Right, we do have a project designed, it was actually designed with the 15th Street project up to the rec center to include turning lanes off of 14th Avenue onto 15th. We couldn't budget enough money in the original project up to 15th Street, or up 15th Street up to the rec center driveway at that time, so we had to pare that back. Now that design and work is really just sitting there waiting for the next project and we will probably bring that forward sooner than the five to 10-year window whenever we get that funded. So there's, it's kind of a work in progress, Mike, and I guess my observation and opinion is that we maybe shouldn't be in a super big hurry to put curb and gutter on 14th Avenue because we do, we do have an adequate ditch system there that's handling the drainage fairly well and I don't know, other than spending some money and doing a lot of pipe, putting pipe in the ground and filling, what our overall advantage would be. So again, that is part of our IMS study. So what we're actually using this year's footprint of our milling overlay project is we can actually now take what we think were our highest priorities, which we put in this year's milling overlay, and actually compare that to the IMS study when it's complete. We don't have the final report on the IMS study, we hope to get that within the next month or so. And then we can actually see how our, what our observations are, fit into their program and then we'll tweak it as we go forward. But again, 14th Street isn't completely off the radar, but we're hoping to prolong the life of it now so that we don't have to do, you know, a million dollar project right away.
Any other questions for these guys, real quickly? Well, thanks, Rob, it's going to be an exciting year. I know that we've been getting a lot of phone calls, why are we not milling already? Why are we not tearing into 29th Street already? Why are we not doing this? It's a tough answer, you know, because the plant isn't open yet, you know, to get any asphalt until May the 1st, but it was a light year and it's hard to know that you could have been in there for the last couple, two, three weeks.
Yeah, it wasn't that long ago, we were still plowing snow, so, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Ryan, you're up. I'm going to, I'm going to allow Glenn to kind of take this over, I'll just give a little preempt this, is that Ryan has been working with Glenn on this particular project and Glenn's kind of taken the ball and rolled with it, so I'm going to just turn this over to him.
Thank you, Mayor. This conversation actually started probably a couple of years ago on the Wellness Center was first getting off the ground with the idea and then progress. As far as, okay, we've got a new facility, you know, several actually facilities coming online, that what value do those pieces of property have as far as sponsorship, naming rights, whatever you want to call it? The conversation got a little more serious here, there was a group of us that met back in, I think it was December before Christmas, the mayor's office, I think. Don, Mike, I think you guys were there, I think Jay Delang, John Small was there. And we kicked this around a little more fully again, we realized, hey, we need some professional help on this because we really don't know what we don't know relative to what we've got as far as value in the Wellness Center, which, yes, we did sell the naming rights to Prairie Lakes for the Wellness Center, but we've got other things up there that are of value that we might be able to generate some revenue from, whether it's to pay off debt or for operating expenses. We've got a new softball complex coming online, hockey arena coming online, hopefully within a year or so. And from there, we thought, well, we need to get some help on this. I started looking around and something like this, I think we realized was fairly specialized and Ryan's name came forward from a couple of different sources as someone who has some experience in this. And Ryan Query with GPS Great Plains. And Ryan Quaria with GPS Great Plains Sponsorship was the name that came forward. Ryan had some experience with a predecessor firm that he was involved with. Anyway, I met with Ryan about three weeks ago down in Sioux Falls, just one-on-one. Just very generically kicked around the idea, you know, what, what are we doing? What can you do for us? I liked what I heard. And then last week I invited Ryan up here and we met out at the Wellness Center. He could take a look around, met with the mayor. Mike, you were there. And again, Jaden Lang and John Small were there. We had a couple, actually a couple of meetings that day. And we, we liked what we heard in the presentation from Ryan. So having said that, a little bit of background now, I, I guess I'll turn over to you, Ryan, as far as pitching what, you know, what you can do for us as a, as a community relative to the new venues that we have that, that's come online as well as what will be coming online in the near future.
Thanks, Glenn. Thank you for having me. I think to put it as, as quickly as possible, I, I think we're fairly short on time. Is my, my experience has been with the city of Sioux Falls, the city of Sturgis. I'm working with the city of Aberdeen. And again, that's to work with them on facilities. So I'm, I'm very used to working with municipalities, particularly towns this size, some that are bigger. My history in the past does have a little bit to do with, with also professional sports, collegiate sports and things like that. But at the end of the day, my company really carved out a niche working with municipalities just like this to come in and help take these venues like you guys have, usually one at a time, but in this case it might be three at a time. And, and help make sure that you're maximizing the revenue on those facilities. Help subsidize any impact that may be on the taxpayers, help operate these facilities in the black. And, you know, probably one of the testaments that I could say that's comparable and recent is the Denny Sanford Premier Center in Sioux Falls. And it's one of the only, I think there's only about two to three facilities in the whole country that operate in the black. And a lot of that was due to the fact that we came on about two years before it ever opened and were able to generate about 17 and a half million dollars for, for that facility. So I think what the conversation here that Glenn and I had and I met with a few of the other folks that he mentioned is, you know, we could come in here and work hand in hand with you, you guys as a city and ultimately do one of two things. And a proposal that I put together outlined this. And that is, one, put together an out, an evaluation, which is what I would also call a layman's term of a roadmap. Basically saying, here's what you need to generate X amount of revenue. Here's how you do it. Here's the presentation to go to market with and break down all of your assets that you have per facility. That's one thing that we do. The other would be that we also do that. And then we actually do the sales execution ourself. I think you guys are a little unique in the fact that you have naming rights right now for the Wellness Center. So you guys might be in a unique position where you have folks with the acumen on staff or volunteers or around the city that may be able to do this for you. And it wouldn't, you know, paying my company commission at that point wouldn't be worth it. And I've been very transparent with you guys about that. So, you know, I think there's a couple avenues we could go. And that's what ultimately led us here. And so I, probably the best thing I could do would be answer any questions or clarify anything more than talk much more.
So I think at this time for Ryan, let's open up questions and, and throw some out. We've still got about 15 minutes left. So there's a lot of time.
Ryan, have you done any studies? Do you have any data that supports using your service gets you X amount more than not using your service?
So as part of the proposal I put together, there are, we certainly have a, a number of case studies that are, why hire us? And they shed light on cities. The answer is yes. So cities such as, cities such as Sturgis. They hired both my company and my predecessor to oversee all their sponsorship sales. And we were there for the 74th and 75th Motorcycle Rally. And we quadrupled their revenue in a year and a half. So we do have case studies as to where they were prior to that and how we can help them, you know, help different entities capitalize upon what we do and what we don't do and kind of the more scientific approach to it versus fundraising.
Ryan, something that you mentioned last week, right here, was that part of your assessment is not just coming in and, and helping us determine what we have to offer, but also determining what its value is locally. Fair?
Yeah, 100%. So probably one of the best examples I could give that I gave to these guys is in Sioux Falls, there, and some of you may be familiar with it, the Midco Aquatic Center. So my company, well, myself, I spearheaded the naming rights for that. And that ended up at a $2.2 million, 10-year partnership. Well, the company, my predecessor, Legends, based out of Dallas, had valued that at, at a maximum of about $60,000 to $75,000 a year and for 10 years. So they were looking to get maybe 600, 700,000. The difference is they never were on the ground in Sioux Falls. They never got to understand the business landscape. They never got to know the people who are that economy, the, the executives in town, the, the small business owners. And I had for two and a half years. So I came back with a different recommendation and subsequently went to market with that. And, and yeah, a lot of that was due to, they, they, they had, they were basing everything on traffic counts and, you know, estimated numbers. And I was basing it on that as well as those intangible factors of what type of a city are we dealing with? What's the philanthropic nature? What's the economy like? What else is growing? And so a lot of those factors came into play and kind of got us to where we were there. So.
And that is something that you would be doing here as well?
Yeah.
Making that assessment?
Yep.
The one question that I had asked Glenn after our meeting was, I was wondering if you had a, a sampling of what we would be getting. And I know that gets to be a little bit difficult because of the, the clients that you have. But is there a way to, to demonstrate to us visually what you've done in the past on a project?
Yes. So, and I don't know if what I put together didn't do that, but I put, I did put something together. It was, it was a one, kind of a one cheater snapshot of, here's the deliverables that you guys will have when I walk away. But even when I walk away, I never walk away. I, you know, I still consult on projects that are seven, eight years old. So, but I did give a, basically a five, I think four or five steps of this is exactly what you'll have in hand. Tried to make it as clear as possible. As far as building out everything that you'd actually have in hand, that would, that'd be a little more difficult due to just different confidentiality reasons. It'd be a lot of, a lot of white out, but I gave, I gave something that I, I think would tell you guys exactly what you're going to walk away with in the, in the, in the, if we do the evaluation side of things. Yes.
Ryan, talk about your, your timetable relative to your availability to work with us. And also the timetable in general relative to the Wellness Center, the softball complex, the ice arena. If you wouldn't mind just touching on that a little bit.
Yeah, I think I'm in a little bit of a, or my company's in a little bit of a unique situation right now where we're working with Aberdeen. And the other project we're working on is the Miami Heat affiliate, the Sioux Falls Skyforce and Jersey naming rights. So where we're at, we're kind of in a pocket of time right now that would lend itself to being able to take on one more project. And as far as the timeline of what I've seen here so far, based on paper and conversations, is the Wellness Center is, is of the most urgency just because you guys have naming rights and it's new. And this goes for any facility everywhere is it's only new once. And so every day that goes by, it's that much less new and you guys are evolving and doing a lot of other things. And every, every day that goes by, a lot of times you're, you're, you may, the value may decrease a little bit whether you realize it or not. So I think now would be the time to maximize the revenue on that. And beyond that, you know, I think as we discussed, maybe that would be the first focus. And then we could talk about how you could maybe couple the softball and the hockey and then start deciding. I mean, the softball's built. So naturally you would think that that may have a higher priority. But, you know, right now the Wellness Center would be the, the, the kind of at the peak of what's urgent for monetizing dollars.
Any other questions for Ryan quickly?
How long would it take, you know, if we, if we agreed to this and, and we entered into an agreement, how long before you would get started and how long before we would have this in hand? Or mostly in hand that it would get started?
I think I put 60 to 90 days if you guys needed it quicker. I think, well, I don't think, I know I could get started on it quickly. 45 days would be aggressive, but it could be done. And it would, it'd be invol, it'd just be involving me being here probably every week. If we wanted to do 60, 90 days, I might do a week on, week off type of thing. But, you know, I'm also not that far away. So I just think that the, that the trips here, that it would involve for, for me to really get a grasp on, on things right off the bat. It would be multiple consecutive days would be the best bet. So whether that be three straight weeks of being here and then one week of staying back and really putting things together and then coming back and giving them to you guys and giving you deliverables. And the way we operate is, is, is very open and candid, like seems like you, you guys are. So it would be, give us feedback. Tell us what to tweak. Tell us what you don't like. And, but usually we, we come to, we come with some pretty strong and accurate recommendations.
Ryan, you, you've given us two proposals that are included as part of our packet for the meeting coming up now in a few minutes. One is just for the Wellness Center. And then the second proposal is for all three facilities. If, if we give you the go-ahead for the Wellness Center, get a feel as to what you're doing for us or can do for us. And then we decide, hey, we want to work with you on the softball complex and the hockey arena. Will that impact or would it be better for you if you knew going in that you potentially would be working on all three? Or is, or can you work with just the Wellness Center for now? And then let us decide if we want to continue our relationship for those other two facilities? And who knows where else may, may lead to in town?
Well, that's a good question. Typically I would say it'd be great to know if I could have all three. I think in this case, what we could do is get started on the Wellness Center. And I would try to move quite a bit more rapidly than I normally do, just due to the time sensitivity. And I think that it'll, it will benefit you and me. And I think if we could figure out a half to three fourths of the way through that, if, if we're on the right track and we like how the partnership's going, that would be probably the time where we would need to decide on the next two. Cause there, I may run into some timelines that might be difficult with other projects.
Okay. Well, thanks, Ryan. I know that in our conversation earlier, there's, there's a lot of moving parts in Watertown right now. And, you know, with our, our Wellness Center and hockey and figure skating and ball diamonds and you name it. We got a zoo. We've got golf course. There's just a lot of things that we have laid out on the table. So thank you very much. And we will take a look at that tonight and there'll be more discussion. So at this time I will adjourn the meeting. We'll be back at 7 o'clock for the city council meeting. Thank you.